Oh, yeah.
Go into your settings and under general, the very last one is reset.
Okay. And that wipes everything out?
Should, that should.
Okay.
Make sure you back it up.
Your what now?
Oh, my, my head doesn't work.
Alright, well, everybody's here, it's four o'clock, call meeting in order, everybody rise and sit the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the reason that we have the meeting today is to discuss the edit budget, we had a joint session with commissioners. But at that meeting, Commissioner asked us to have a, our own session because of the recommendation to get back to them for the edit budget, so. I'll just want to jot it down real quick. Let me just talk through these one at a time. So, the first item is Chamber of Commerce for forty-five thousand. The second is EDC, that's a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. Highway, two hundred and forty thousand. SFL ECC, is that right? Can't write. For ten thousand and then Delphi Chamber for three thousand.
We're talking about the individual, right?
Yeah, let's just go through. I'm sorry. Is there any, probably the easiest thing to do would just be to say, is there any objection to the each individual line item funding, and then we'll discuss them, if not, if there's no objection, then we'll just go ahead.
I thought we were going to discuss them on each individual.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but if there's no, if there's no objection to it, or there's really no reason to discuss it, unless you want to do it.
Yeah, let's discuss.
Okay, very good. So, first one, Chamber of Commerce, open the floor through station.
What have they happened past?
That's been the same forty-five thousand for a long time, and then the other forty-five thousand, thirty thousand is a straight pass-through that they use, that the county uses the Chamber to buy media placements for tourism, things of that nature, and then they have fifteen thousand as per operation.
They had it divided as administrative fifteen thousand, signage is twenty-five thousand, and county marketing was five thousand.
Wait, this is Carroll County Chamber?
Right.
Important, important job they did. Will we make a motion to pass one at a time if we want to, or?
Yeah, we can.
The only questions I've been asked about is why would we need administrative fees? And I guess it was said on the, or many times, the seller said, five years that they stand around. So, I guess the only question I would have is fifteen thousand, why would we need for administrative fees?
Julie's here, do you want her to speak to it?
Yeah, can I have you to speak to that?
Yeah.
Do you want to put it in front?
Yeah, please go to the podium and state your name.
Okay, Julia Leahy, Carroll County Chamber. And the fifteen thousand is actually to cover, it helps cover a part-time person that helps maintain everything, so. In addition to all of the legwork we do to do a lot of the advertising, I brought some of it with me. And we also have carrollcountyvienna.com, which is mainly the tourism website. And that takes a lot of work to keep it updated, so in fact, we just went through a redesign and just went live with that last week, and there's already a ton of stuff that's got to be done to update it again, so. It's not just our time placing ads, it's our time doing a lot of things like that. Meeting with people, serving as a visitor center, doing all the online work too.
If you did not get this funding though, you would still be able to sustain yourself.
Yes, and just no longer doing any tourism.
Yeah, we would no longer do any tourism.
Well, I'm not, I don't have the time or the means to pay somebody to take care of all that. So, we wouldn't be able to maintain any websites any longer. Or, we can still do visitor packets, that's easy to do, but for the most part, I mean, that's a lot of time it takes to put all of these things together, so. Yeah, we love to keep doing, and there'd be also some marketing in Carroll County if we are, so. Yeah, we could sustain ourselves, but again, it just changes what we do on a daily basis.
So, you don't think, like, isn't Purdue and Ivy Tech, are they stepping up to help with things like that, also doing, doing building that?
That doesn't really have anything to do with marketing and tourism though. Yeah, they're stepping up, you still have to do your own website, you still have to do all the information. I mean, we still have to put together everything that goes into the ads, we still have to do all of the legwork to get it to them, so.
Well, I was talking about funding.
Funding, that's not for the Chamber, that's for the Rural Innovation Center, so it's kind of a different ball, it's a whole different entity. So, yeah, we do, I spend a lot of time trying to get all these things together and keep on top of community events and keep that community calendar updated, and unfortunately, we just maybe have to step back from doing all of that, so we don't have the means to pay somebody to do that, and we want to help with that, so.
There's a little bit of a confusion going around right now of what the building is for and.
Those funds are completely secondary.
Yeah, Carroll County Chamber being in matter. We're actually the anchor tenant, we pay rent, so I'm actually still paying rent, same as what I was doing before, paying all the utilities. So, we pay rent to the foundation that owns the building, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of people don't understand.
Yeah, they probably don't.
Maybe, and that's the Carroll County Chamber, so if there are any little block buildings and do all of that, we're still supporting in that.
Yeah, it's actually a foundation with a C-three, whole separated building that was formed, and so that's what's paying for the building, but we're the anchor tenant paying the same amount of rent. The utilities are being considered higher than what we were before. We're covering all that, so we're up and running, obviously, but we'll still be the main tenant paying rent, that's not going to change.
So, that's one of the questions I've been asking about.
But I can.
Why would we have administrative fees when they're supposed to be standing on their own two feet?
Yeah, if we were just the Chamber, being the Chamber, yeah, we would be, and we are self-sustaining, that's all I'm doing, that's all I'm doing, so. We're still maintaining all this stuff and maps and, you know, everything that's got to get done to promote Carroll County, so. As of right now, I haven't done a whole lot of marketing this year, I've had to cancel some ads just because I wasn't sure what kind of funds we had to work with. We did go ahead and get in the state tour guide and the state festival guide, which is about fifteen listings. These ads had to be placed by September one, so. I'm already on the hook for owing money for those, but the rest of the stuff right now, I'm, right now, the Lafayette West Lafayette, look, once we make a commitment on an ad, I'm afraid to, you know, for fifteen hundred bucks, if we're not going to have that, so. As of right now, we've got minimal advertising going out, so.
And what's the signage, what kind of signs do you use?
We had, we had purchased signs to do the ones on the highway, on the Georgia Heartland. Those were done, gosh, those have been three, four years ago. We've done a few little smaller signs, like Mooreville Woods on the road to Monticello. You know, if there's a tourist attraction that we can pay for a sign, we'll do that, so we try to keep some money set aside for that. We haven't done any major signs lately.
Very expensive.
Very expensive. Yeah, the ones on the highway were about nine grand each, so that's a big chunk of money.
But each year, we continue to give in twenty-five thousand every year?
Yeah, and I keep adding, I'm taking on more and more publications. We've done some billboards, we've done a little radio, trying to get people to come to Carroll County to shop or do business here. So, yeah, I, yeah, every year, we find ways to do more. Website, we've got videos, so we just picked off, so there'll be some video work done.
What, what effectiveness, I mean, this is, I presume, is for the county?
Yeah.
Why, I mean, you're covering Burlington, Florida, I know there's not much interest there.
Well, there is though, yeah.
Well, a few, but, you know, what effectiveness have you seen and or heard from folks?
Yes, it's a touch and measure, yeah.
It's like economic development, you know, if you don't have it, you're not going to get anything. But even if you do, you still might not get anything.
We find especially, there's a couple of publications that have been real effective. This is statewide, and so I make sure that we put events in here for all of the, so Burlington, Paul Festival, Adams Mill, Forest Deco Days, Old Settlers, Flower Show, everything we put in this, and it's done by each month, and there's, I think, a half a million units over this date, so people use days quite a bit. So, I do think we get people from things like that, and we can see the traffic on the website and the number of hits on videos, I mean, we see people are looking at them, you know, whether or not they come here and physically stay and spend money, that's tough, that's tough to measure.
What is the cost for that?
Which one?
Festival guy.
Oh, this guy? I think all of them that we ended up putting in was about twenty-three hundred dollars. So, it's for a full year, and like I said, it's half a million copies.
It's pretty cheap.
I kind of thought so. One thing that we have discussed is if we do get funded again for tourism projects, is creating a committee that would do, kind of Lafayette does, they take grant applications, so. If you have a festival or event or you need a brochure done, you apply for a grant from the Tourism Council, and then that way, we can give them five hundred dollars of, say, of your money, these funds, to pay for the projects. So, instead of one or two of us making all the decisions on where to spend our money, then we can bring in a committee to do that. I think that would be effective, Old Settlers could apply, and Adams Mill could apply to do a new brochure or whatever, so. It's another way that we can, you know, make it more effective for people, so.
So, you haven't done the signage enough, you said for the last couple, three years?
We haven't had any opportunities to do any more signage, yeah.
So, what have we done on the funds?
I've sent you all those documents, it's been in video work, it's been in website, it's been in all these publications, it's been radio. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we spent more than thirteen on February, something about, last year, so.
So, what's the Chamber paid?
We, what, I forget, what we overspent, I think it was about thirty-five hundred dollars. So, we ended up, you know, taking that out of our own budget, so.
The Chamber absorbed that cost.
Absorbed that cost.
I think that's a little confusing too, what you have the Chamber eight, and then you have the Chamber.
No, she's saying that they absorbed it, they ate it.
Ate it, like.
They spent more, ate it.
Chewed up and swallowed it. Ate it, we ended up spending thirty-five hundred more in the Chamber, funding itself, paid for that, we covered that cost. Yeah, because we did some video work that we thought was pretty important, so, it was a little more.
I'll make a motion to, to the forty-five thousand.
I'll second. We're not approving it to the commissioners, we're just approving a recommendation to the commissioners. Okay, is that your motion?
Yeah, my motion. For clarifying.
Alright, so, a motion by Paul Ryder.
We can do a great job for us.
Second by Ethan Brown to approve recommendation of the Chamber on the amount of forty-five thousand, so any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is economic development for the development corporation, EDC, a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. During discussion about the appropriation for the economic development. It was slightly less than that in.
One eighteen.
Yeah, the year before that, it was one.
One, two, six, seven, seven.
Thank you. Well, this is actually less than our contracted amount, the contract that EDC has with the county, it's so much per person. And then this, which was the hundred and forty-six thousand number, the commissioners appropriated a hundred and eight, whatever that number was, a hundred and eighteen, last year, and then went to one thirty-six this year, because it's still less than the contract amount to be signed.
This is what they would say with those EDCs, payback with the contract for the commissioners, and I believe it's the one here.
Right, for this, one thirty-six. Or no, I don't think it's, I think it's still the same amount per person, so I could be wrong. That's the amount on the contract, okay, very good.
So, they performed last year, the one eighteen, and we're giving another twenty thousand this year, questioning why if they were, had the ability to perform the one, they would have made this one that much.
Yeah, the one eighteen, then they're not sustainable for EDC. So, what is the net one?
Sustainable, I mean.
The, the, the one hundred and eighteen thousand they dipped in the reserve fund to operate off of in the calendar year nineteen. So, the funding level at one eighteen is like, is not sustainable.
How did they get the reserve?
How did they get the reserve?
It's built, it's been built up over the years, when Daryl Smith was here, he had some investments, and they've not touched most of those since Daryl was here.
But this contract is for just the one year, usually three to five years, and they negotiated with them and payback with the one year for that amount. And they signed it upon council's approval in the end, so it's really not signed until, because they won't use that.
I made a question, would we recommend to the commissioners funding of one thirty-six, five, for this one here, for the contract?
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foe, same sign? Motion carries.
I'd also like to bring up that they did a, the Chamber for the first year, you can see, that they did a contract with them too, and they did propose, and they also brought in their budget for them to see, that's something, and it was for one year too.
Okay, next item is the highway, now, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I'd like to keep that number the same, because I just think the roads in Carroll County are too important to the voters and the citizens of Carroll County to even mess with that, so I, I would personally like to see that left alone.
I think they need to add a little money there, and hopefully, we get a new business entity that would need a short stretch of highway. Two hundred and fifty dollars, that would be very much, really, have it in there.
Sorry.
I think we need to keep that in there.
Discussion. Well, when we looked at his budget, we actually brought Paul in to review his budget, because he, my recollection, he had more operating funds in his budget than technically what he needed. So, we had a conversation with him around that to try and understand what he was proposing for 2020. I don't think, I agree that we should keep the two hundred and forty thousand in here, because roads in our county's infrastructure are that important, but I don't think that it needs to be just for the the operations, the day-to-day, the month-to-month operations of maintaining the roads. I would almost like to see it be more of a, a larger project.
Capital project.
Some type of a capital project, potentially. So, it's there, to your point, Doc, if there's some need that arises where we can, we can earmark this money, or Paul would have it to use for that project, then, then it's there and it's available. I mean, economic development would, would in my opinion, recommend that we have that available, so I agree with the amount. Well, this was, this was the sheet that Paul gave us at the last, at the joint meeting that Tracy and Josh and I were at here, and it shows a breakdown of everything that he has in his department, and that he has budgeted one million two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars, and the total budget included in the two hundred and forty thousand that is in here, brings his budget to one million three hundred thousand, so there's very little room to mess with anything I believe.
Oh, I want to clarify, he has four million dollars sitting in his account, and last year alone, he spent less, about a million dollars less than he brought in. So, even with the two hundred and forty thousand dollars that's appropriated here, if he got zero, he was still at seven hundred, assuming the same funding level, he sold the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus, and last year, he paved a hundred and twelve miles of roads in the county, and this plan was only for like seventy, for that, at that funding level, so. We know that at two point six million dollars, he can pave a hundred and twelve miles of roads a year, which is forty more miles than the plan calls for, so, you know, I.
Can he come to us if he has it, if he can, then why, why put this two forty in there?
Well, I, you know, my opinion, so we do not have to appropriate every dollar that we take in on edit. So, we could leave this money, and just similarly how we do at the Carroll Manor, and we do at the Health Department, we do at these other funds, like Tracy and I talked about this at length, about keeping track of these dollars, we could keep this in the, in the fund, and then appropriate it, so we could, it's a cumulative fund, so that money will sit there, we can, we could, so if we did, you know, we said, you know, our goal is to do a major road project, to work with commissioners, identify that major road project, and then save this money over the next however many years, and then we can spend that money along with the money that are in the other fund, coffers, to do a major significant project, but to do that, this money has to be there, can't be spent, so, I mean, there's a couple of different ways you can do that, the easiest of which is just to not appropriate it, leave it in the, in the coffers, and then if, if, let's say halfway through this year, we found out that that two hundred and forty thousand was needed for a specific capital project, we would just do an additional and then appropriate that money, and it could be used at whatever time. Out of edit funds, right. So, it's every, every dime we've, so? Right. If the commissioners ask for it, yeah, we don't appropriate that, it's the commissioners ask for the appropriation, but. But we can absolutely do that on an additional, and, and if, and if it doesn't get used, then that money sit, will sit there and grow, and I think this body, and Tracy and I talked about this at length, we have to do a better job of keeping track of what's in all these cumulative funds, and, and reporting on those. Yeah, yeah, exactly, like the Health Department, reporting on those on a monthly basis, so when, when these things get saved, we know what they're saved for and how they're saved, but this also gives us some flexibility, that we wouldn't have if those monies weren't over on the highway side, so, yeah.
Unfortunately, lumping these all together is kind of bittersweet, because I feel that you'd be doing the same thing for, you know, the Chamber, the, the EDC. I mean, we're throwing them money, but we're not necessarily showing that that's where it's going, but you have to do it all at once, correct? So, they can't come, because they're their own entity, whereas the Highway Department, we appropriate their money, so.
They have to file a claim to show that they have paid that or have a bill on that.
So, you're wanting to take it away from the Highway Department, that you're not wanting to be cut back?
I'm not trying to understand, I mean, I'm not wanting to take it away from the Highway Department, I just want to save it for a capital project.
But I say you want to take the two hundred and forty from the Highway Department and save the whole amount, whereas you don't want to cut back on anybody else's to put in the pot to save either.
Yeah, I, I, I think that those two appropriations are important at that funding level, but, you know, I think.
Because you don't know what the EDC has in their backup fund, you don't know what the Carroll County Chamber has in their backup fund, you're just, so. But since you know what the Highway has in their backup fund, you're wanting to cut them off.
Oh, I had those numbers, and I think you were emailing those as well, with their financial reports, and I just don't have it in front of me right now.
And Tim, they don't use it for everyday operations, this money, they use it for their chip and seal program.
In 2019, when they bought a dump truck, so.
Well, I know that, and that was a different thing that they had commissioned from the commissioners to do. But this year, it says clearly chip and seal program, so that would be the only thing that we could, that we could process the claim with the commissioners, is only for chip and seal.
So, do claims.
This two hundred and forty thousand is for just chip and seal?
That's what this, this is what this order sounds like.
I make a motion, do you want to approve it?
I'll second it, I think that goes along.
Motion by Ethan Brown, seconded by Paul Ryder.
No, Doc's talking.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to speak in opposition to this motion, because there's, I want to read, there's like seven million dollars in the Highway Fund right now, seven million dollars in all the accounts, that includes Q and Bridge, Highway, local street and road, and the wheel tax. This tax is levy for economic development. The, the highway, if we gave them zero edit dollars, would still have a surplus at their current spending level.
And that also doesn't include the possibility of the non-GAAP grant?
That takes, well, that, that, we never budget the grant, but.
Right.
But even if they don't get the grant, they're still, at their current funding levels, they can still pave a hundred miles of road and do everything that they have off of the highway drugs, because, because, and I, I've talked to commissioners for previously putting edit dollars here, because it's important, and at one time, we didn't have enough money to do this, but since the gas tax, we have an additional million dollars a year, you know, we can do everything that we need to do now off of that, and we can save this money and, and do something really meaningful on a highway project. So, my.
Okay. I know you stated that there were a couple of ways to do it, what are you supposed to do, you know, to add a budget, appropriate it, or have the, appropriate it, when and at that time arises?
Yep.
I was thinking maybe a second way, if we do go ahead and appropriate it, but the caveat earmarked on it for large capital expenditure type programs, would that suffice or not?
I hate to say that without having Eric here, because that's a really, I mean, you could do this in five years, about what a, you know, how you, that would have to be worded.
What would be, what would qualify for, for you, for larger than normal capital projects?
Yeah. And I don't know about putting strings on edit dollars in general, that would definitely want Eric's input on that.
You'd have to be very specific for us, you know, okay, if we're bringing a claim and.
And then what if it's something else that has a higher economic value than what you put in, intended for?
And the, the nice thing about it, at the end of the day, if the highway funds run dry, we can always do this, you know, I mean, this is our plan to save, or this is my, my opinion, is to save it for a major capital project, but, you know.
You just need another month to do, right?
If the, yeah.
Did you have to come before us and just put everything off another month?
Right.
And do whatever we used to do if I were.
Well, I would think, Ethan, in the process of that magnitude, it's probably going to be a month, or a month and a half, or two months out of it. So, if it's being contemplated, would you take it there?
Yeah.
How do you think?
My thing is, we already lowered his budget by seven hundred thousand at the start of the year, and now we're going to lower it another two hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, and I want to clarify for the record that, that we have already made the commitment to, to fix his budget.
So?
Yeah, we talked about it in a joint session, I mean, I said that, I would.
Which one, the meeting?
We would, yeah, oh, that's fair, that wasn't a meeting, because it wasn't called, so I stated my opinion during a. During a meeting.
I just don't see how we could not have forum. Lower than my nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for the year, so.
Well, are we really, in essence, lowering his budget, because this isn't part of his budget, really, is this?
No, no, I want to ask.
My initial comments weren't that we weren't going to allow this money, my initial comments were, let's, let's approve it on the, on the condition that it's used or set aside for a capital project, a, a, a major improvement.
Yeah, and we, if Paul came to us today and said he needs a three million dollar additional, we have the ability to do that because he has three million dollars sitting in his highway fund and then another, you know, close to a million in the reserve fund or in the, uh, what's the name of that, eleven seventy three? Special Highway Fund or whatever. Forget the terminology.
You know, so that's the.
There's, there's four million dollars sitting there and, and, and we can, you know, we are sitting here in a, in a meeting and we could take action and say we will appropriate, his fund, or we will, we will admit, or if he requests to have his budget up to whatever his revenue is forecasted at for the calendar year twenty twenty, uh, that we would make that commitment to appropriate those dollars. So, you know, the idea that we're trying to cut the budget is just not accurate. The, uh, you know, I can't speak for everyone, but I think I have, everyone is set up for the record that, um, whatever it takes to get it done, we'll, we'll, we'll utilize those funds that are in highway currently. Alright, so the motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on Ethan's motion? Ethan's motion is to, approve the two hundred and forty with no conditions. I assume that is.
Right.
Okay.
It's right. To approve it as it is on here.
Right. Okay, um, is there any further discussion on Councilman Brown's motion? Alright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion fails two, five. Okay. Is there any other motion that would like to be made for the highway?
Well, I'll make the motion that we, um, we keep the two hundred and forty thousand in there and we edit it however we want. Appropriate it. As soon as Paul comes, we, you know, and there is a project that needs done. But I am a true believer in, in the savings.
So your motion would be to not appropriate the two hundred and forty thousand to just let it stay in the coffers?
Recommend to the commissioners.
Recommend, thank you, Paul. Alright, is that, that motion by Tracy Martin?
Second.
Seconded by Paul Ryder. Any further discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to ask that for the accounts that we implemented before it was a highway or.
Q and Bridge.
Well, Q and Bridge is specifically for bridges, correct?
Well.
Bridges.
Oh, so it can't be used for a road project. I think it can be used for a major project, but it has to be bridged earlier.
Well, and that bridge is a bit kind of wishy-washy because the bridge is also considered culverts or, you know, if not what you would call a bridge.
It's a thing over a water.
Yeah, so I mean, so when, yeah, so there's, some of those get a little gray, gray for how they get appropriated. But yes, and so that would be Local Road and Street, Wheel Tax, uh, Highway, Highway Restricting, Q and Bridge.
And I, because I recall back in, you know, those, six, seven, you know, five, whenever all that gas go kind of took place, that, if I remember correctly, that's what happened was, you know, money was worth, and we found some of these restricted accounts and, oh, we got all this money, but we didn't, we did, but.
You had nothing to do with the highway or any of that.
Well, I know.
It was, uh, wow.
Okay, yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I just want to make sure we're not stepping on the legal toes when we look at some of these other accounts that could be utilized in thinking of the consideration.
When the claim comes in, we look at them to make sure that it's, that can be taken out of Q and Bridge.
Which one?
Or, yes, that it qualifies, otherwise we send that. Or give them to the commissioners to, um, make the counts out there. And we haven't had that.
Josh, may I clarify bridge funds?
Yeah.
Okay. The bridge funds are, are, as you said, Scott, are restricted to just bridges and culverts. A bridge is anything twenty feet long or longer span. A culvert is nineteen, eleven or less in span. There's a difference. We may use bridge funds for highway as an approach to the bridge, but we cannot pave more than, it's either a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet each way. There's a restricted amount that, that we can use for the approaches to it, but that's all. Now, I've known of counties who have, I mean, you know, we go to commissioner conferences, I've known of counties that have added pipes to the road in different places so they can keep paving down the road. And, uh, that seems to suffice, but we, we haven't ever done that. Anyway, that's, this should give you a little definition of bridges, bridge funds.
Any further discussion on the motion? Alright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign? Motion carries seven, zero. Next item on the agenda is the FL, F C C C, how do we get that? That's horrible. Okay, uh, the Lake Association, an amount of ten thousand dollars.
I think what I knew before.
The fight before you. Well, I mean, there's.
Language.
Yeah.
As I brought up in the previous, um, meeting, um, my district is obviously of, well, riverboat and they have, do not like this because this has already went to court and it has been judged by a judge. And so they're really wanting to collect this money to just put it into the count to keep fighting something that has already had a judgment against it, or, yeah, against it. So my thing is, if you're gonna give them ten thousand dollars, you better look to see if the river associations come to you and say, we want ten thousand dollars to start saving to fight against the plan, or the, the, most of them at all, so. So I think this is a very tricky one. I know the, the Lake people are all for it, but if it had not already went to court, I could possibly see it. But since it's went to court and it's already been judged on, I don't see why we're, you know, giving ten thousand a year and.
Um, yeah, and I, there hasn't been a commitment to do this every year and we didn't do this last year, but I mean, just to clarify, but.
But they come every year.
Yeah, and that's my understanding, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
And is there some talk that the Lake Association isn't kind of, you know, not helping, or not allowing some people to build docks and, and, and I.
I did get that complaint from a tax payer, but the Lake Association was, I don't want to say threatening lawsuits, but they were giving them a very hard time. And then also, they have a dilapidated, uh, dock and, you know, it's a insurance hazard for them because it's on their property, but because they have to permit that through the, the Lake Association, the Lake Association wouldn't let them fix it. And so that's a Carroll County tax payer that is at, is at odds with these guys, that, you know, making it harder for them to do business in Carroll County.
Is that on the lake?
It's on the lake, on the Carroll County. So that's, you know.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to recommend, a motion not to fund the Lake Association for ten thousand.
Um, motion by Paul Ryder, is there a second? Seconded by Tracy Martin. Um, I, I want to say one other thing on this, and it's a really challenging issue. It really is. I mean, it's very complex because, the, the entire assessed value of Carroll County is one point one billion dollars. The assessed valuation of Jefferson Township is about a quarter of a billion. So, you know, we're getting growth, twenty, twenty-five percent of the entire assessed value of county is in that township. So, not that we pick winners and losers, right, but if, if that lake, if that lake goes away, that's no longer lake front property and those assessed values are dramatically lower. Um, and so that means that everybody else is going to, it's actually increase. The assessed, I mean, that's just the formula, right? The assessed value goes down there, it goes up everywhere else. I mean, it doesn't go up, but the rate goes up everywhere else.
I wanted to say too, the last time they received money from edit was in two thousand seventeen, so it's not been every year. They ask every year, but they don't get it every year. Unless you're the expert on it.
I think, I wonder what the odds are that the lake's going to, that's, really.
I would have to say your homeowners association is going to step in if that ever comes apart, I mean, comes to light. And I think that's where this, this funding needs to come from, is from the homeowners associations of the people that actually live on the lake. Instead of incurring a, taking a land or taxes and accounting the.
Alright, uh, the motion second on the floor, sorry, please.
I'll just throw in, I think probably it's a slippery slope when we're endorsing citizens, fighting for citizens, protecting citizens. So, that's my.
Anything else? All of them. Motion is to not approve the SL, the Lake Association, uh, to the commissioners. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign? Alright, motion carries six, one. Uh, next is the, uh, the Delphi Chamber Old Settlers, um, money in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Now, are they changing this to, to the Main Street Association or something?
I'm wondering on that, Tracy.
Uh, it is possibly, yes. Built by Chamber. Due to the fact of, of funding. Um, if they switch over to the Main Street, then we will, we'll get grants. And it will, I coincide all the counties, all the chambers, but now it's going to be working more as a group instead of people joining so many different things and, but as for this year right now, we are staying as is visible, it will take the year to change.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ethan Brown, seconded by Travis Ryder. Is there any discussion?
You know, we're, we're a county government here and this is more considered Delphi since, like, um, as well, you know, Old Settlers. I, I don't know if that's, it seems like that's, that's more of a, of a Delphi thing, I just.
I agree, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that we, it begs the question like, why, I mean, like, the fair would be very important. We don't fund the fair, I mean, it's not, the, the fairgrounds are in our budget, but, but we don't do Burlington Festival, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of these around. And, you know, it, it does say Carroll County Association, but I mean, like, Ethan, are you getting business for Old Settlers?
Well, that pulls a lot of people from Flora, that's for sure, it brings them here, but I think anything to bring people to Carroll County is a good thing. I think people from Tupi County, from Blenheim County, just all overcoming the old settlers. And I, I think that's a huge, huge thing because then they spend money at the gas stations in there.
I agree, I agree. And it's such a nominal amount, like, you're talking three thousand dollars. Uh, I, I think that the benefit on that three thousand dollars might be just like Ethan's talking about. I mean, just the residual money and, and, uh, impact that it has on the county.
So let's clarify, it's not, it's not putting on the festival. It is for advertising out of Carroll County only. And the reason that we upped it to three thousand dollars because it's a presidential election year and they've already told us that all of that will be done.
So, you know, one of the things I would like to, I mean, at least for this body consider is, is for us to hold up on this and ask the city of Delphi to do it from their edit coffers. Because they have four hundred thousand dollars in edit sitting there that they could use to market for an event that's in this and to do all the same things. And kind of re, put this backwards, in my opinion, it should be that local municipalities use their edit dollars to do that. You know, if we want to overhaul a whole thing, kind of speaking to what Julie had said earlier, and have a gross marketing budget for all the town festivals and then kind of appropriate that. You know, maybe that's a little bit of a different conversation, but for us to pick one and not the other, you know, that's.
I agree with you, but I think, but it is good that they were talking about three thousand dollars, so I mean, we're not, it's not a huge expense by any means. For a festival, I'd like to, like, I certainly would like to see advertising for Flora and Camden and Burlington and all those other towns. But I think at the same time, it's okay to advertise for the Old Settlers Festival too, so.
Well, while Bill's here, why can't we ask him, would it be something that you would be open to talking about from the commissioners? If you set aside, I don't know, X number of dollars into a county-wide festival grouping and Burlington, Cutler, Camden, Flora could come here and, you know, solicit money for one of their festivals and we would be using that money for that, that would take some heat off of, I think, everybody and say, well, you know, everything just happens in Delphi. Well, you know, maybe not up to anybody, but maybe available, might not be a bad idea.
Well, first off, an answer to that, there's nothing that we won't hear and discuss. Any ideas that come up are welcome before the commissioners. I think that maybe it's a real good idea to have a joint program for, uh, funding, uh, promotions of festivals. The overwhelming thing, I think, to us was, we request, we request organizations.